Good morning, everyone. I'm John Colwell, Chair of this distinguished board and Joint Authority and Canal. Very pleased to have all of you with us today to conduct our as regularly scheduled or maybe now specially scheduled meeting of, excuse me, the Authority and Canal. With me are my fellow trustees Nakandry Gonzalez, Balboni, and McKibben. And participating via video is Trustee Pacente. Trustee Trainer has been excused during this earlier for Governance Committee, but otherwise excused for the full board session. As always, we have Gil, I should say Gil and Justin, and now the full NIPA leadership and other members of senior management. And as already stated, scheduled meeting duly noticed as required by open meetings law, and I'm pleased to call the meeting to order. Agenda had been presented and reviewed by all of us. The only minor modification we have is the last item that was anticipated, one of the last items on our original agenda was an informational item relative to New York Energy Management and e-mobility, which is being deferred to a future date. So with the benefit of that minor modification, it asks for motion to approve the agenda as presented and minorly amended.
Second?
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. We've also all had the benefit of contractors list that we're presented with and responded to, and I'm assuming there are no other amendments or changes there, too. Obviously, this is a notable session for us in my, whatever this is, nine-plus years. The good news is, this is our first leadership transition. Obviously, incredibly significant and important day for Gil, for Justin, for the organization, for Gil and his family as well, and we're all excited and pleased to have this opportunity. Letting go, saying goodbye is never easy, but we're doing so with a sense of real pride and enthusiasm for what Gil has done for all of us as an organization and what he will carry forward as he moves a little further west and embraces new challenges and new opportunities. So it's for the last time, I'm incredibly pleased to invite our President and CEO to the podium to present what will, for us, be his final CEO report. Gil?
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman, and good morning to everyone. Let me begin by congratulating Justin and wishing him the very best in his new role. I'm certain that the power authority will thrive under his leadership and that of the Chairman and the trustees. On so many days during my time at NIPA, I have hoped that this day would never come. I've been at the Authority for 14 years. It will in fact be exactly 14 a week from Friday on October 29th. This is the longest I've been with any organization. It's been the defining experience of my career. My service as President and CEO for the past decade has been the honor and privilege of a lifetime. The successful addition of the New York State Canal Corporation to our NIPA family has made it all the more so. I've always known that it would be hard to leave and that only a truly exceptional opportunity could convince me to do so. Such an opportunity did arise with the offer to become the CEO of Commonwealth Edison or ComEd, the excellent subsidiary that serves the city of Chicago and most of northern Illinois. As I've told the trustees and my NIPA and Canal's colleagues, I believe that this is the right move at this time for me, my wife Paula, who kindly, was kind enough to join us, joined me today, and our teenage daughter Sela, who couldn't be here because it's picture Last week, when I met and informed Governor Hochul of my decision and submitted my resignation, I said to her that the New York Power Authority is a jewel that's absolutely vital to the state's nation-leading efforts to fight climate change and to create a vibrant future economy. She fully agreed, and she said she'll be looking to NIPA for more major initiatives in the future. She also noted that as a Lieutenant Governor, she'd probably attended more of our events than those of any other state entity, and she let me know how impressed she had been. And some of you will recall, one of her first public appearances as Governor came last month when she visited the Niagara Power Project to mark the completion of work on the first unit as part of our landmark 1.1 billion Next Generation Niagara program. So I think it's safe to say that NIPA has a friend in Albany, and I have every confidence that you will more than justify her faith in us. You know, a lot was written last week by both ComEd and NIPA about my accomplishments at the Authority, but ComEd and even NIPA had it wrong. They were not my accomplishments. They were your accomplishments. None of them would have been possible without the support and guidance of our current trustees and their predecessors on the board. For us to do anything of significance, the trustees had to say yes. So thank you, Mr. Chairman and trustees. Nothing would have been possible without the expertise, diligence, and leadership of the members of our Executive Management Committee, and nothing would have been possible without the talent and dedication of our exceptional employees in White Plains and at our projects and facilities throughout the state, union and management, and in recent years at both NIPA and the Canal Corporation. I've said it so often that it's almost become a cliche, but I firmly believe that it's true. Our employees are our most important resource. So whatever we've accomplished over the past decade, we've done it together. I think, for example, of projects like Next Generation Niagara, SmartPath, Now SmartPath Connect, like our 726 million transmission life extension and modernization program and those at our hydro projects, like the AC Transmission Project or what we call Central East Energy Connect from the Mohawk Valley to the Albany region, and so many others. I recall the other day that very early in my time as President and CEO, I served as co-chair of the New York Energy Highway Task Force, and that NIPA staff members led the way in putting together the blueprint that's really been the foundation of our subsequent efforts and those of others to ensure that our state will have a clean, reliable, and affordable power supply. Then I thought just last month, our historic 11 billion Clean Path New York project with our partners Energy Re and Invenergy was named a winner in response, in response to NYSERTA's Tier Four request for proposals to deliver clean energy from upstate to the New York City region. So the Energy Highway and Clean Path New York have really been bookends to our initiatives to build the smart power system of the future with plenty to fill in the space between. We can also take pride in other major achievements and to mention just some, not only integrating the canal system as a NIPA subsidiary, but also launching the sweeping Reimagine the Canal initiative, becoming one of the first end-to-end digital utilities, carrying out a raft of programs in such critical areas as energy efficiency, renewable energy and energy storage, electric transportation, and economic development, aggressively promoting sustainability, environmental justice, and diversity equity and inclusion, and yes, being designated three times by Forbes Magazine as one of the nation's best midsize employers. NIPA's work, NIPA's important work is, as always, unfinished. There are imposing current challenges and others lie ahead, but the Authority's leadership is strong and its finances are solid. Many major projects are well underway or planned. Vision 2030, our strategic plan, provides a clear path to a bright future, and I'm confident that the Power Authority will remain what it's long been, a jewel that brings unmatched benefits to the state of New York. Though I'll soon be leaving you, a large part of my heart will always be at NIPA, and I will never forget you or my years at the Authority, and I'll be cheering you on as you move forward to still greater successes. Thank you all very much from the bottom of my heart.
We certainly thank you again, Gil, for the tremendous leadership you've shown over the last 10-plus years. As I've said several times over last week, any leader wants to know that they've left their organization, their entity, their responsibilities in a better place than where they found them. In your case, we're in a much, much, much better place than where you found us, and it's been a great run for you. The really good news is, not only are you keep, going to continue to run, so are we. You're positioned us for even greater success and outcomes as you've just referenced, and we're excited to build on your legacy and make you all the more proud in the years ahead. So one more time, thank you for having me. I wish us for you, Paula, C.L. I mean, I know you're going to have fun in Chicago. Ah, come on, Paula. You haven't gotten there yet, you know? That Midwestern feel and flavor, you'll enjoy it for sure. All of that being said, equally important, as we pass the torch and leadership baton to Justin Driscoll. Justin's been a critical advisor for Gil throughout much of his run, a key member of the Executive Management Team and Committee, frankly, a key advisor for us around this board table, one makes him incredibly well-known and incredibly comfortable for all of us as we effect this critically important transition. As we've all said a couple times, our best is still yet to come for all that's been accomplished. There's so much more for us to do. Expectations of us are even higher, and we're excited that we have such a fabulous executive team in place to lead the organization with stability and strength as well as excitement and energy, and we're honored and very pleased that Justin has been willing to step up and step into the interim role to ensure not only does the ship stay steady, but that we continue to climb due north. So with that, I'm very pleased to introduce for the first time our interim President and CEO, Justin Driscoll.
Okay, well, that was a very tough act to follow. Let me start by just congratulating Gil again and Paula, who I've gotten to know over the years, and Sela, on your, on your next career move and your future, and I wish you all the best of luck. And thanks to you, Chairman Colwell, and the Board of Trustees for the confidence that you've placed in me in picking up this interim role. I think my first order of business is to pick up Gil's scorecard and this is...
They look at green.
That was good, but then I thought to myself, can they give me a couple of yellows?
He's a run warrior.
In any event, as you look at, as you look at the August Vision 2030 scorecard, you can see that we're all trending really well and in the positive direction. By all, by all metrics, we are exceeding our, our year-to-date targets, so everything there is tracking well. Gil has left us, as we all know, in an incredibly strong position. I do want to call out just, I know that in the dart rate there, we've got reasons for that, that we've talked to you before about, about that tracking a little behind, but otherwise, we're, we're, we're full speed ahead there, and that's all according to, all as a result of Gil's great, great leadership. So, so I think we're, we're in good shape. Let me just start before, first by, by saying that it's a great honor to serve as the interim President and CEO of the New York Power Authority. Let me again add my, add my voice to the national chorus of good wishes and congratulations for Gil. He's been a truly great CEO who has set a very high standard for all future NIPA leaders, and this measure of excellence will be very much needed at this special time in NIPA's history, our 90th anniversary year, perhaps a true inflection point as we take the organization forward. And moving through this still-new decade, we're now able to serve the needs of all the people of New York in so many new and different ways. Let me just stop, I think, here to just, you know, say a few words about me and my background. As you all know, I've been at this table with you for the last seven and a half years. The General Counsel role is in many ways a, a behind-the-scenes role, but I've been here as an advisor to the Board and to senior management. I've learned from the Board, I've learned from my colleagues on executive management. I feel like I, I know the Board, I know, I know what makes you tick, how you think, what you want to see from the organization. So I feel like I'm, I'm well-positioned to, to take us forward during this interim period. And because of Gil's, I think, strong leadership and development skills with his team, he's given me the ability over time to add additional business units in my portfolio. So I've had the opportunity now to not only focus on the General Counsel or purely legal role here, but also to add on public and regulatory affairs, the NISO Market Issues Group, Environmental Justice, Community Affairs, Hydro Power Licensing. So I say that because I think it's given me a chance to, you know, to manage other parts of the organization, so I'm not just coming to the role at this point just directly from a purely GC role. So I think that has also positioned me well to, to take us forward. Where do we find the organization? Well, as we saw, we find it in great shape by virtue of Gil's leadership. You know, you mentioned the projects, there's just, there's so many to name. We've got, we've got probably the most acronyms in the, in the energy business in our project descriptions and, but you know, if you talk about the Clean Path Project, an $11 billion project, we're playing a meaningful role by contributing our right-of-way and, and our expertise, SmartPath, Central East Energy Connect, SmartPath Connect, just so many great projects that are going to create jobs for, for New Yorkers and also provide interesting work for, for our employees. That's another strength of ours, our employees. Gil mentioned, Gil mentioned the, the accolades we've received as a, as a very strong midsize employer, and you know, we're working on so many interesting things, and we're really doing cutting-edge work in the energy industry, which has helped us attract even more talented people to the organization. So we've got to, we've got to continue to give those folks interesting things to do. We've got to, obviously, priority number one, keep them healthy and safe, but we're just so, we're just so strong from an employment standpoint, from a project pipeline standpoint. You know, you look at the work Sarah Salati's doing in the Commercial Operations Group, those businesses that we've been incubating are now coming to scale, they're doing well. There's just, you know, the sky's the limit on, on what we can do either in distributed energy resources or virtual power plants, e-mobility, NYAM. I mean, these are really cutting-edge impactful things that we're doing. My priorities going forward, I think, Trustee McKibben and I were talking about this last night, we can't let our guard down on cyber. You can never say that cyber's under control or we've got it, we've just got to keep being really vigilant in cybersecurity matters. We push forward the Reimagine Canals effort, that's so important for the long-term financial stability of both the Canal Corporation and NIPA, and just keep pushing forward on our development pipeline, which will, which will enhance our financial stability by providing for revenues in the years to come. So I'm delighted to be serving in this interim role, I look forward to it, I'm ready for the challenge, and thank you again.
Thank you.
And as we've all referenced a few times, and as I've said in the past, just hang on a couple minutes, Paul. This is an organization, and Gil was the first to acknowledge and admit, it's much more than the person at the top, it's about much more than us as a board. We're all here and we're, take great pride in what we do as an organization because of the strength of the team and the talent that exists from top right through out and across all that we do in this great state. So know that, and whether I'm talking to the organization or those that we serve, while excited for Gil, we're equally enthused and supportive of Justin and the team. And while change and transition is never easy, this is one that we as a board are totally comfortable, we were prepared to affect, and we look forward to even bigger and better things to come. So we don't approach this with any level of anxiety. We approach it with a sense of anticipation and expectation. Not only do, does the train keep running, are the lights still on, literally and figuratively in our case, but they will shine even brighter for, in the, in the weeks, months, and years to come. So we thank Gil one more time, we thank Justin and Lori for stepping up and stepping in under the circumstances, and probably most importantly, we thank the leadership team and all the organization for being here day in and day out for the benefit of NIPA and all we serve, and we enthusiastically look forward to talking about our continued growth, success, and evolution when we're back together in December and for every week, day, week, and, and month in between. So one last time, Gil, thank you very, very much. Congratulations, Justin. We look forward to working with you and the entire leadership team from where we sit best in the business. We're blessed to have all of you and excited for what we know. You and your teams will continue to deliver for the betterment of all that we serve across our great state and set the pace and tone frankly for the industry at large. So, right, great day for Gil and his family, an exciting day for us as an organization. With that, pivoting back to the business of the day, looks like Paul Tartaglia is excited to get back to the podium and give us an update on where we stand fighting the COVID battle and navigating its challenges with our mask on as we sit around this table.
No, thank you very much. I just want to get on and get off, so give you guys more time today. Just want to start and finish with the same place. Our response against COVID has been very robust and, and very effective. You know, to date, you can go to first slide there. To date, we have almost 1,600-plus employees have been vaccinated or reported their vaccination status out of the Power Authority staff. About 330 of the Canal staff employees have reported their vaccination status as a benchmark, 70% of, 76% of all New Yorkers over 18 have reported to be vaccinated. If you factor in seroprevalence, which is the existence of, of predisposed immunity from disease exposure, that puts us very close to haven't heard immunity across the organization. We have implemented our vaccination or testing program. We've completed nine full weeks of vaccination and testing program. Through the program, we've completed just under 5,000 tests in the first nine weeks. We have identified about 22 positives, so we are finding people in the workforce who believe they're healthy and ill, but we're taking care of them through our contact tracing, putting them out of work, and ensuring that we maintain the healthiest workforce that we can have. So between the high vaccination rates, the testing program, our HVAC improvements, the countermeasure guidelines, which you've heard so much about, you know, the COVID team, and I feel very confident that NIPA and Canals are very well-protected. You can go to next slide, Colley. But however, feeling good doesn't ensure that we maintain continuity of service both on the canals and on the electric generation side. So with that, we carefully continue to monitor and track all of the metrics we have. We look at the metrics from multiple different perspectives, statewide, nationally, regionally, different aspects of the workforce, different buildings. So nationally, I'm sure you've all seen on the news, things are declining, they're declining steadily and rapidly across the COVID-19 Delta variant. New York State, things haven't been as robust to decline, but they are declining slowly. But the good news on that is our infection peak wasn't nearly as high as the national peak. So our peak was only about two-thirds of the national peak here in New York State. The graphs show stories here, but the graph on the left reflects the number of positive cases per month, and you can see that we, the numbers are trending very closely to what you've seen in the national news. So far for this month, we've only had seven cases reported, so that's only through the end of September when this slide was prepared. The graph on the right represents the NIPA Canal's positivity rate based on testing as compared to New York State. So yet again, you can see we're almost in order of magnitude better than the general population of New York State. So like I said, in closing, we continue to look at this from multiple angles, we meet on it very regularly, we collecting data, we look at it in almost real time. We are very well-prepared for the next step of return to work, which we're beginning this week with more presence in our, in our physical offices. We're confident that the work we've done significantly mitigate the risks to the Authority and to the organization. And again, in closing, really believe we've done a great job in ensuring the health of the Authority, and we'll keep a close eye on it, you know, we'll make our own luck on this.
Excellent.
Good job.
Thank you. Any, you know, questions for Paul? Christine, I see you on the, the screen as well, as Paul referenced, return to work. I rode up in the elevator today with an employee who indicated it was a lot easier when there weren't so many people around. So the good news is, you know, anecdotal evidence that people are returning to work. Any further thoughts there as we transition back? Obviously, Justin gave us the scorecard, all greens, results, productivity outcomes, not being compromised, anything but, but any thoughts or reflections to share, Christine, as the organization pivots back?
Yeah, we have a, a good plan. I think, you know, we engage almost all of the managers, hundreds of people in, in this process, and they were a part of it. So, and what we say to them as we go throughout it, when they ask, what's going to happen next, I always say, you tell me, right? Like what, how is it going? What can we do better? What can we improve? And the feedback that we've had thus far has been, has been great. This week, we're going back minimum two days a week to the workplace, and it's been really smooth, and we have a scheduling tool, we have communications, we're, we're constantly getting feedback from staff, and we're reinforcing with managers that this is really a good opportunity to not only think about flexibility for remote working, but flexibility for people that are in the workplace five days a week full-time, right? So flexibility doesn't just stop when it comes to remote working. So as we move through this phase, we'll continue to get feedback and iterate until we achieve a formal, long-term plan.
I know when I met with everyone, everyone, like Executive Management, KLS, I know when I met with everyone, everyone, like executive management, you asked me, this was a topic that, you know, was brought up multiple times in terms of just how we navigate and manage the process. And as you just said, be in touch and tune, be as flexible as need be. We're not returning to what it was. We're returning, we're, we're moving to what it will be, you know? Return to work sounds a little too presumptuous that it's back to where it was. This is how we better go forward and appreciate all you and the team are doing to ensure we navigate to what's still undefined and a tad unknown in terms of the optimal working environment. The economy is obviously continuing to be significantly challenged by all that. Our ability to win and prevail is not only incumbent on us retaining the top-notch team, talent, team and talent that we have been able to recruit and adapt how we do business. So I appreciate your leadership, in particular there Christine, but everyone's as well. And we need to stay very actively engaged because yeah, ultimately we've got to have the intellectual capital to execute on, on all that we do. So Paul, appreciate your leadership navigating through the crisis. Would say it's totally in the rearview mirror, but it's great to look ahead and feel us over on a more solid, stable path forward. So thank you, one and all for delivering and navigating and continuing to Bruce very positive and strong scorecard. Any other questions on the topic? All right. Next up, Joe, our COO report.
Thank you, Chairman Colmo, trustees, Gil, Justin, the staff and the public at large. As I like to finish some of my meetings with my staff and they'll be familiar with this if they're listening now is we also generate and transmit electricity. I wanted to give you an update on a number of different things that we have talked about over the past several months, some certain incidents. You can go to the next slide, please Carly. What you're seeing here is indication of our generator market readiness. Commercial availability is good. All of our hydro plants are in really good stead and they are in the market. This measure is a little more tuned to tell us when we're, how available our units are for our own purposes from reliability. And we are missing the mark on generator market reliability. And that's primarily due to two issues. One is on Blenheim-Goboa Unit Three. You may recall that they had a, an issue with a circuit breaker, an interrupter on a circuit breaker that we discovered during maintenance. After much deliberation and debate, our engineering team in collaboration with some external stakeholders decided it was best that we take that unit out of service to prevent forced outage versus risking a catastrophic failure of the breaker. So that unit is back in service, was repaired, it is back in service, and we are now going through repairs on the additional units, learning from that unit. Unit four is going to be in progress shortly and we'll move on to each unit to get that repaired. The other input to that was our Flynn unit, which was another unit that failed from the rotating equipment perspective. That unit was under repair. We were actually considering many options because the, the, it was not really in the market very well. In doing so, we were collaborating with PSEG Long Island and the New York ISO and others and decided that from local reliability issues, they were very interested in us repairing this unit and are come to an agreement with them to do that. That unit is under repair right now. We expect that back in about two or three weeks. Next slide, please.
Again, as I ask every time, none of that suggests our, we've been compromised in our ability to serve customers. So the bottom is read by our standards, but not because we've had some optimal performance in serving our customer.
That's correct. We consider it a more inward looking measure to make sure that we're, we're going to be there for reliability issues.
Sorry, yeah, and I, I had a similar question. So thanks for the clarification of that. On the Flynn matter, that's an example of us working with the community because the assessment was we didn't need that in order to deliver our commitments to our customers, right? But we decided to do that because the community wanted it. And it shows how we try to be a community partner, even though it's not necessary for our operational and strategic purposes, right? I remember that, that's the project.
Exactly right, exactly right. So what we're, when we look at the broader reliability issues across the state, it's definitely not a unit that comes into play there. So working more regionally, more closely with PSEG Long Island and understanding with the local reliability issues where that's why we made the, the arrangements to negotiate with them, get an agreement in place to make sure that unit's available for them. They needed diversity of, of sources of energy on Long Island for the resilience and also the market.
That's fine, thank you.
Next slide, please Carly. So Y49, another asset that you've heard quite a bit about. This is again, this transmission line that goes through Westchester and then underneath the sound and into Long Island. We've had several, we had four over a period of roughly a year faults on the Long Island section. It's a particular construction that we've described a number of times, but as you recall, it's vulnerable to this thermal mechanical bending. In this repair, after this fourth fault, what we decided to do is replace a longer section of this to mitigate the future repairs on the existing line. And we're also putting together a plan to update the line entirely on the Long Island section. It'll be similar construction in order to make sure, again, from a reliability standpoint, from the New York ISO and also on Long Island, that whatever outages we have, we're optimizing as, as much as possible. So we're going through that process right now, so we don't have to go through as, as many permitting processes. It's really about just repairing the line in kind in Long Island. So that is actually back in service as well. So good work by the team about two weeks ahead of schedule from what we predicted and those repairs are made and we're, we're set for there for now. Again, we're going to be looking at replacing the entire thing. Next slide, please. So out in Western New York, we have a couple of projects, ones on the tail end of the entire project. It's our Lewiston Pump Generating Plant, Life Extension and Modernization Program. We have finished all 12 units. They are now back in service. There's some cleanup to do on a few different units, but the motor generator overhaul from PG5 began in August and returned to service in February. And we've completed all the other upgrades on this unit. The, the talking points on there are really about how we, as we started to get more and more comfortable with these units, we also started to engage our own internal labor on, on some of the reassembly, disassembly and some of the other scope of work to make sure that we have the competency in-house to, to check out these units as, as they go back into service. So that's one on the tail end. Next slide, please. On the other side of the plant is next generation Niagara. We did complete the upgrade of the controls on Robert Moses Unit Number 12, which is our first unit. There were also some plant-wide upgrades that are associated with that that we did complete as well. So we are recommissioning Unit 12 right now through the, some, some of the controls. And we also are starting the main control room upgrades on next generation Niagara. As you recall, that's the $1.1 billion work that Governor Hope was there to, to talk about as well in Niagara recently. So very, very happy with the progress there and everything's on, on time and on schedule so far. Lots of learnings to, to move on. Next slide, please. The Flynn plant we did talk about as well, that I just wanted to show you some of the details of what we did out there. We also discovered in the far right there, you see these rods that go through the entire rotor that were damaged and it was a really a credit to the team on site there to kind of do a thorough inspection of the, not only what we were repairing, but also the rest of the equipment. And we believe that those insulation breakdowns that you see there, like slots across those bars, would have led to a potential catastrophic failure not long after going into service. So a good catch by our team and, and we're putting this unit to back in service by the 15th as predicted. Final slide, I think. Oh, and I, there's two more actually. So Brentwood Hydrogen, New York Power Authority is in a very learning mode on hydrogen right now. We're really trying to understand what our role is going to be, where we should be investigating. And we do see it as a potential solution to decarbonization of our fossil plant. And we are looking to demonstrate injection of, of clean green hydrogen, so that's produced by renewable energy into our Brentwood Small Clean Power Plant. That's a peaker unit, one of 11 we have in our fleet out in Brentwood that we can use to demonstrate this technology. The idea here is to continuously increase the amount of hydrogen we're putting into the natural gas mixing skid to the unit itself, to about 30%. And at, at each stage, taking a look at the unit, look at data, try to balance it, make sure that the emissions are not out of control, that they're continually improving. And then at the end of all of it, we're going to take this unit apart, take a good hard look at it in collaboration with General Electric, who's the manufacturer, and APRI, our partners through LCRI, the Low Carbon Research Initiative. And we're going, this is really open source learning. We're looking to share all this information with the industry because there's a lot of these units in the fleet and a lot of things that we can learn from here. And that is actually going to be really kicking off in earnest in the following weeks. And we will have this hopefully completed and tested by January 20, it should be, yeah, January 22. Next slide, please. And as you all know, over the period of the last, our, our last meetings, we've had several very active storms in the Atlantic Ocean. We've had, you know, typically when we look at these things, we try to position assets in a place where we can respond very quickly to where we think it's going to be. Often that does kind of just put us on a heightened alert because you don't know where it's going to go. But we had three storms, Fred, Henri and Ida that did affect us. We were very successful in managing these storms, a very close collaboration with New York City DEP and our other stakeholders at the state, Dishes and others, to position our own assets in a way that alleviated a lot of the potential flooding that could have happened throughout the canal system and then primarily in Skahery Creek with our Blenheim-Goboa Plant. So with the, the collaboration of those assets, we were able to open up gates, allow free-flowing water prior, position the reservoirs in a place that we could either pond or pool if we needed to. And in the end, we, we were on the brink, but we were very successful in managing the water and mitigating any major issues with these storms. So just another, again, day-to-day type of operational issue that we have to contend with, especially this time of year. And we're going to be looking at the after action reports, working again with those entities to make sure that they're on the same page in terms of future storms and how we position these, these assets in, in those storms. But overall successfully managed that. I think that concludes my report.
A couple of slides there to the Brentwood, you know, the hydrogen, I don't know, any terminology, first of all, a little bit, we're potentially seeing the opportunity for us longer term, what's best case scenario, what can we, you know, hope for here in general in terms of, you know, the impact of, you know, this technology on, you know, all that we do, which you said to generate, transmit.
Yeah, I think, I think Brentwood is going to be a microcosm of a broader issue. I think what people in the industry are really trying to figure out is the, you know, what is the complete supply chain of hydrogen and how will this potentially work as a solution in energy? I personally feel quite validated. I did my graduate work in hydrogen fuel cells 25 years ago and very excited that we're all talking about it again.
It only took 25 years.
25 years, but you know, where was I going anyway? But John, I think this is a, this is really a microcosm of what we're, we're trying to look at. And I think what we've learned already in terms of like the supply, getting the hydrogen to a location like this, how much, what's the, what is the impact to the equipment? There's an embrittlement of metals and things like that that are very technical. But there's also the, the EJ issues, you know, do, you know, is this, can we demonstrate that this is clean so that it is a viable option in other areas that people are concerned about continuing to use combustion turbines? What we've learned in that process is a lot of people are talking about this and many people are knocking on our door to talk about it, local utilities, gas utilities, several manufacturers, equipment manufacturers, all trying to figure this out and hydrogen manufacturers as well, all trying to figure out the entire supply chain. So we, we see this as a learning, but we, every day and even this morning, just hearing from international companies who are interested in seeing how this works and also like what else we might think about doing. So Gil has guided us over time, the last several weeks, you know, just keep learning, just keep on trying to understand and see what our role might be in this. Other state agencies are also acting very proactively in this area. NYSERDA under the direction of Lieutenant, of the, I'm sorry, Governor Hope. You know, so I think there's some excitement around hydrogen. I think we could play a, a significant role and help and demonstrate what's possible here.
And Joe, if I can just add, so this is the first of its kind in the United States. This, this pilot, this demonstration, which we will do towards the end of this month, in November through December, blending green hydrogen in the natural gas fuel stream up to 30% by volume. And we will see, does it work? What happens with the, the other criteria pollutants, right? Not like NOx, you know, because of community issues. And to really accelerate the, the decarbonization of especially hard to decarbonize sectors, this is one promising area that, that we, we need to explore, the industry needs to explore. But kudos to, to Joe and the, the entire team. We're, we're again, leading, we're the first one trying this out in the United States. And we will share the results of our experiment to, to everyone to help advance the technology in general going forward.
Any other questions of Joe? Okay, thanks for what you're, well done. And thanks for generating and transmitting. You and your team, well done, well done.
Keep the lights on.
That's right. Sarah.
Right.
Warm it up.
Warm it up. Okay.
I saw you give her.
I know, I know. Anyway, okay. So good morning, trustees, colleagues, public. I'm here to report on the commercial operations progress year to date. Next slide, please. Okay, so we are in a very strong position when it comes to power supply or merchant revenues or margin is really on target. It's about four to 5% anticipated to be above the expected value that was set back in September. This is very good news considering what we were facing earlier in the year, some headwinds around ice management and the impact on our generation. In February, April and May, we had congestion specifically around some outages for construction for transmission. But we have our hedging program that's in place and that is helping us really reduce the volatility in this line item. And specifically, we've seen in the last several weeks, some increases in the energy prices as well as rest of capacity prices. The increase in the energy prices obviously helps us because gas is at the margin when it comes to the marginal unit in the market. And so that obviously has an impact on our spreads. That being said, the reason we have been seeing the gas prices go up is there was disruption because of Hurricane Ida and some other severe weather events that impacted the supply chain in the south, as well as some disruption in Europe, which is causing many of the producers to be exporting LNG, liquefied natural gas out of, out of the, out of the country and pushing up the prices. But all in all, we're in a good position and very happy with our, our success to date. Turning to economic development, we continue to be a driver for economic growth and competitiveness of New York State. This year to date, the team has allocated over 70 customers' power, which has also supported over 9,500 jobs created or retained. We set targets every year in terms of the number of applications that we want to receive. And already year to date, we've exceeded that target by over 10%. So that's a testament to the team getting out there, sharing all of the great work that we're doing. I spoke at the Multiple Interveners Conference about two weeks ago. That is the organization that represents the largest energy consumers in New York State, very large manufacturing facilities and very large job creators and retainers. What they said to me was very positive. They were highly, highly complimentary to our economic, our, our edcap programs, the bill deference or forbearance, as well as the temporary power allocations. And they also are highly complimentary of our customer account center. So that says to me that we're doing a good job, that our programs are well received and that we will continue to drive economic development across the state. Next slide.
Before you go, so the 404,000 jobs retained and created over what period of time?
That's just, that's consistent with all of the power allocations that we have. It's like, right, right? But we're constantly tracking with incremental allocations, whether they're expansions or the additional jobs that would come into the market. And we're also working these days on green jobs and looking at, at quantifying that. And we have over, I think, 1,300 green jobs that we've also facilitated. I know that Paul said that, and the chairman said too, that COVID's in our, in our rear view mirror, hopefully. It, it, it isn't quite. We see this every day when it comes to the supply chain writ large across the country. I'm talking about Long Beach and the other ports, let alone the, the lack of drivers to transport these, the products and equipment across state. But that being said, you know, we are impacted by COVID still. It had a disruption in supply chain. It had a disruption in the remobilization of labor to, to the projects that we run in addition to permitting and interconnections, there's just a backlog. But that being said, when But that being said, when you look at the portfolio of our products and services, we still are on track. And I point specifically to customer Clean Energy Solutions where we have a very broad portfolio of some hundred, 400 projects. And there were certain projects that were delayed because budgets were held up at our customers, funds not released. But the team really hustled, identified new projects to fill in the pipeline. And so we do feel that we'll be on track to meet the commitments that we had by the end of the year. Additionally, I would draw your attention to the, the second bullet under Clean Energy Solutions. That's our, our pipeline, our portfolio contract signed. And you can see as a matter of course with our businesses that we have a strong and robust pipeline for the next coming years, 2022 and onward. I've talked a lot about e-mobility in past meetings, that what has been impacted, like I said, from some of the COVID headwinds. Seven out of the, the targeted 124 year to date. That being said, we anticipate that there will be over 100 chargers, either operational or in late stage commissioning by the end of the year. So normally you don't like to say that they're hockey sticks. We're in Q4, everything's going to take off like, like, but like, like internet stocks. But that, that, that is the case and we're tracking it very carefully. Also too, the team is filling a robust pipeline and we have over 150 chargers signed up. So again, it's just about getting them in the ground and they're working very hard to have that happen.
Looking at it the longer, continue what we, you feel very good about the trajectory and the charging and work all of us.
Yes, because, yes, because.
See, in fact, you're like, it's not going to slow us down. We'll be quickly back on the original trajectory and travel, right?
Yes, thank you for that summary. Yes. And then on the customer sided part of it, we also work with transit agencies across the state. And we're working now on transportation, electrification, mass transit plans. And we'll look forward to seeing those come to fruition in the next year or two as well. All right, next slide. So I mentioned that the multiple intervenors were very complimentary of our customer account center. We're consistently trying to get closer to our customers, more proximate, elevate the relationship we have with them. And so we launched the Customer Digital Energy Experience Initiative a couple of years ago. The Customer Account Center is one example of that. The functionality that is available there is what you anticipate and expect in your personal life. We want as individuals ease, convenience, access to information. And that's exactly what this account center provides. So all of our power customers are on there. They can see their bills, they can pay their bills. In addition, they can do compliance. So for all of our economic development programs, they're able to go on there and do a compliance survey to retain the allocations that they receive when it used to be very cumbersome. So we, and with spreadsheets, et cetera. So we've had a lot of positive feedback on that. And one thing I'm most excited about, and you see it in bold, is the September 2021 milestone, where you're able to see, our customers are able to see all of the projects that they're doing with NIPA. So to the extent that they're power supply customers and they also have a portfolio of energy efficiency projects with us, distributed energy resources projects, solar plus storage, they can see the entire portfolio in the system. And we've just met with the city of New York last week and they were very, very pleased with, with the results of that because they have 55 subsidiaries and we used to have to walk into those meetings with spreadsheets and flip them over and follow all of them. But now it's a one stop shop when it comes to access to all of the good work that they're doing with NIPA.
Sarah, this is an advancement of that, the, the work that we've talked about becoming a digital utility, not just measurement of our own assets, right? But this is how we communicate with our customers, making it more digital.
Yeah, no, exactly. I mean, I look at a continuum under the energy value chain. You start with generation. We have asset management. We're censoring to better manager assets. And this is at the other end of the spectrum in terms of the interface on, in the digital realm with our customers.
Yeah, how they are able to see their activity, but then also how we can communicate with them and try to create even additional efficiencies. Where they are using it. Great.
All right, and last slide. Additionally, we've really been working on elevating our marketing. And NIPA, this was even said to me a couple of weeks ago as well, of the New York State Economic Development Council, where I was on a panel. They were very surprised, many of them, at the range of products and services that NIPA had to offer because they only know us in some cases in very narrow ways. So we're really trying to address that in terms of upping our marketing game. So we have a number of webinars this fall called NIPA Now Energy Showcase, where we provide overviews of the different products and services and then provide opportunities for, for Q and A. So the first one is tomorrow. You're all welcome to join it if you have a free hour, but it's been recorded and we'll look forward to utilizing that more broadly. And finally, I just wanted to publicly thank Gil for his leadership. You know, I've been at NIPA Now for three years and what he has done when it comes to the customer is exceptional. Elevated the customer in the eyes of NIPA. He's elevated product development. He's elevated and, and driven innovation and new business models. And that way that you see that is because in our Vision 2030 strategy, we have one initiative which is all around the customer and the state. Because fundamentally Gil knows that if we do not work with our customers, whether they're governments, state agencies, the private sector, we will not get to the clean energy future that we expect to reach. So thank you very much, Gil, for the recognition of that and for the support that you've given us.
Questions for Sarah? A great report. Appreciate the energy and terrific outcomes. Well, well done. I'm not sure about the rest of us, but I'm glad you are. Form us up with a strong financial report.
Good morning, Chairman, trustees, NIPA staff, and the public. Again, congratulations, Gil, Justin, Lori. Go to the first slide, Carl. So we continue all the trends we've been saying in the last month. We, on our actual year to date, we continued to do better than planned by about $5 million. Revenues are ahead, both on the generation and transmission side, a little bit behind on the nonutility revenues, which we also spoke about before. And expenses are tracking to plan mostly, a little bit behind on the allocation to capital, which is really a timing of the capital spend. We hope that that closes towards the end of the year. So here's where we are through the actual, through August 31st. The next slide, we'll do a forecast at the end of the year. Okay, so yeah, the full year forecast, we see ourselves doing significantly better than plan and potentially even, even better than that. But we'll wait to see based on some valuations that need to be completed by our outside auditors and actuaries, regarding some of the changes we made earlier this year with some of our benefit plans. But generation continues to do better than plan. Prices, as Sarah said, have firmed up, has done well, somewhat limited because of our hedging. But we also have protect our downside in terms of any kind of downside movement in prices. Capacity prices, rest of state as well, has been very strong. And transmission revenue is much stronger than plan, partly due to the fax revenue, which is revenue that we derive as a result of some congestion, which we also spoke about earlier, as well as just on our annual revenue requirement for our transmission, which came in a little stronger than previously forecast. That again is a July 1st, 21 to July 1st, 22. So we don't true it up until the middle of the year. And again, expenses are, are tracking mostly on, on the O and M side. And some additional expenses we also spoke about that are not being budgeted for are also accounted for here. So what we're saying is as far as downside, very little downside. Significant, significant upside from where we are in the plan, targeting around 57 million. But again, we'll give some updates as we go forward and could be a little bit better than that.
Just for clarity, when you say significant upside actuaries, so we're talking about actuarial valuations, the written benefits of the rate environment, all the rest of that?
That's correct.
All right. Then aren't running to core operations personally? Just trying to clarify, are there any expectations that, okay, go ahead.
Yeah, I mean, there'll be some non cash items that we will firm up before now in the end of the year. More on the accounting side than in terms of regular cash earnings on EBITDA.
So ripple effect of the 10 year and the 160 zone versus 120 zone, all the rest of that will, will benefit us as what longer term rates and all the rest, right?
Absolutely.
Yeah, terrific, obviously, great outcomes and appreciate any other questions for Adam?
And then again, just on the nonplan side, balance sheet continues to be very strong, liquidity, strong. So we still have, you know, on the balance sheet side, again, very solid financial foundations in footing going into the future.
A lot of dry powder to put to work and managing and navigating just that, right?
We've got plans for it, so.
Generally speaking, any, any surprises as you look back from January forward? That put us in this position itself, anything that, that got, were developed better than we thought they would be? Or were the trend lines that, that have improved?
I think the revenues have done a little bit better. The thing that was a little bit surprising was the, the fax revenue, which we hadn't planned on, which is a result of, we have these sensors that are deployed throughout transmission system. And when there's congestion, we see actually additional revenue from that. I don't believe we had forecasted that kind of congestion this year. So that's actually resulted in more revenue on the transmission side. However, it has resulted in less generation on the hydro side, but they've actually worked to offset each other. So it actually worked out very well for us.
You were asking if we, Adam, sandbagged the plan? Is that what you're asking, Mike? Was there any sandbagging going on or what? Adam, thanks very much. Well done. Well, and good segue to deploy our dry powder. We had a lengthy finance committee meeting, I don't know, a couple of weeks ago now, wherever it was. Where we had a robust list of opportunities for us to further invest that financial capital that Adam and his team are navigating. Tracy, give us a report on the outcomes or recommendations from finance committee, please.
Great. As I said, we have plans for all that cash that Adam referred to. The finance committee met on September 21st as well as October 6th. In these meetings that we adopted minutes as well as received four staff reports. And then we adopted eight items on September 21st and one item on October 6th. At our September 21st meeting, the quarterly release of an additional up to $22.9 million in funding to the Canal Corporation to support the operations of the New York State Canal Corporation. We also had the recommendation to the trustees to approve capital expenditures in the amount of 149.5 million for the Y49 transmission line, Nassau segment reconducting project, and a contract award to the Okanite Company in the amount of $38 million. We also had a recommendation to the trustees to approve the contract award to NAES Corporation for a total authorization amount of 35 million for the N-City gas turbine operation and maintenance. We also have a recommendation to the trustees to approve the request to execute power purchase agreements with NG and Aramesco and the City of New York for an estimated annual cost of $11 million for up to a term of 20 years. Also a recommendation to the trustees to approve the award of continued authority wide contingent staffing services agreements to 11 vendors in the amount of $24 million for a term of three years. And then a recommendation to the trustees to approve the contract award in the amount of 21.9 million for a five-year engineer procuring construction contract for design, construction and commissioning, transmission, commissioning of the transmission, life extension and modernization program. That's the Messina substation project. And then a recommendation to the trustees to approve contract to SMIT in the amount of 6.5 million for the Y49 spare system equipment. This request includes a waiver to the requirements of Article 22, which is the steel components for the authorities agreement document. And then the final recommendation for our September 21st meeting was to the trustees to approve and award of personal services contracts to provide statewide canal dam safety engineering support services to the best value technically qualified supplier, which was determined to be AECOM, Burtman Associates, Henningson, Durham and Richardson, and Schnabel Engineering for a five-year term for a total aggregate amount of $20 million. And the, the, the single recommendation for, from our October 6th meeting was to recommend to the trustees the approval of the budget report and the authorization and ratification of the authority staff's middle of the budget report to the state officials identified in Public Authorities Law, Section 2801, and the filing of the budget report electronically with the state in accordance with the requirements of the New York State Authorities Budget Office and the state controller requirements. I submit all these to the full board and now ask for a motion to adopt these items.
Take that as a motion per se, second from the judge. Thank you very much. We all participated actively in both of those meetings and lengthy discussions. Unless there's any other questions that come before us, I'll call the vote. All in favor? Any opposed? Motion carried and good work, Tracy. Appreciate your leadership with the committee and further evidence of leaning in to the significant opportunities we have to further invest literally in a wide range of some great projects and initiatives. So thank you very much. This morning, ahead of full board, we had two committee meetings. The judge chaired both. The governance stood in for our chair, Dennis Traynor, who was unable to join us in person. The judge gave us governance committee report, if you would.
I will. Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. During the meeting of the governance committee this morning, the committee adopted a consent agenda, which included a number of routine annual reports and the meeting minutes from the last meeting. We received an update about, about two Vision 2030 strategic pillars, the status of each initiative and received insight into the 2022 strategy. First, the diversity, equity and inclusion team has implemented programs to achieve their 10 commitments by building their pipelines, improving capabilities and engaging internal and external stakeholders. Second, the workforce planning, knowledge management and process excellence teams explain their programs to attract, engage and develop a resilient workforce, improve information management and sharing and optimize business processes. They are on track to complete all of their goals by the end of this year. In addition, the committee received an update about the next phase in the organization's hybrid remote working program. Finally, the committee adopted two motions to recommend to the appointment, to recommend the appointment of Justin Driscoll as interim president and chief executive officer and Laurie Alessio as interim executive vice president and general counsel. These motions are now before you for adoption and I so move them.
Second.
Second. Thank you very much, Michael, Judge. Appreciate that report out. Any questions on either motion? Obviously, as we've said several times already, very excited to have Justin step up and step in on an interim basis. And the same to Laurie. We again thank both of you. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried. So Justin, you are now official. And Laurie, you as well. Try to keep us out of trouble, Laurie. All right. Lastly, we had a brief audit committee meeting out of a special purpose to approve an engagement with KPMG. Judge?
Also this morning, Mr. Chairman, the audit committee met and received a request from Adam Barsky, Executive Vice President and Chief Financial Officer, and Sandeep Thakur, Controller for Approval of Non-Audit Advisory Services to be provided by KPMG LLP. And then the consent agenda, the increase of funds to the personal service contract of KPMG presented. The audit committee approved the non-audit advisory services to be provided by KPMG. The committee made a motion to recommend to the full board approval of an increase of funds to the personal services contract of KPMG in the amount of $2,200,000 for additional accounting services for a total contract amount not to exceed $5,200,000 over five years. The board vote for the KPMG non-audit advisory services, increase, an increase of funds to the personal services contract of KPMG is before the members as part of the consent agenda and I would so move it.
Second.
Thank you very much. Not during the other discussions needed, but unless there is, otherwise all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried. Tony as well duly noted. Motion carried, Tony as well duly noted. Thanks very much, Judge, for both those reports. Tracy, again, both of you for your leadership and good work being done by those three committees. The consent agenda is before us, was presented, and hopefully everyone's had time to review. If anyone has any questions, happy to entertain them now. But otherwise, I'd ask for a motion to adopt the consent agenda as presented. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried. As I mentioned upfront, our last information, what was intended to be information item for New York Energy Manager, e-mobility's been deferred, and we'll pick that up either in December or at a later date. And hence, we now conclude where we started, which is one more and potentially final recognition, at least for us as a board, to thank and acknowledge Gil for his tremendous service for the last 10 years. I won't, I'm not big on reading resolutions, and there's more whereas's than I could make my way through. We trust, as always, the team's done a fabulous job of documenting and acknowledging the many accomplishments of the authority under Gil's tenure. And as I said upfront, in a minute, I'll let other members of the board share their perspectives as well. We thank you tremendously for the outstanding leadership and building the organization, building the incredible team and talent that we have around the table here today. Our star has risen, yours as well. And most importantly, we're confident both will continue to ascend in a very, very positive direction. So we can't thank you enough and appreciate your service. We'll be watching you from afar as well and cheering loudly in support of you and the good work you and your new team will be doing. So one last time, thank you very, very much. Let me give my fellow trustees the opportunity to share their perspective.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Gil, it's been a pleasure working with you. We go back a long way, as I told you last night and told the other members who were having dinner with us. And it's been a learning experience for me, and it certainly has made my life much better, having known you and Paula. And I truly appreciate that. I know you're going to do well, if not exceedingly well, where you're going. You've done that here, and we look forward to following you and cheering you on. So again, thank you for your work here. Thank you for your friendship. God bless you.
Thank you.
Be a favor from our longest-tenured trustee to the newest member of our team. Your thoughts? You've had limited opportunity, but share some reflections.
I think I can say, Gil, that I'm really honored to work with an organization that you position so well to meet the needs of the future. And it's evident by my interactions with the team since I've been on board that you've created an authentic organization that really cares about people, the community, and the job it needs to do. And, you know, I wish you the best. I wish you and your family the best.
Thank you very much.
If I may, when we're around the table, I'll look up at Tony. Tony, certainly want to give you the opportunity, long distance, but nonetheless, you know, from the heart to share your thoughts as well.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Gil, and as I said yesterday, I'm sorry I couldn't do it today. And we're really wishing you the best. And I've come to know Gil, and I've worked with Gil even before I was on the board of trustees. And you've been a great partner in all of that, and we, in my role here, we have come. And so it really is better sleep to see you go and wishing you the best. But I did send Gil a quote that said that a leader is someone who takes people where they are to where they have never been. And Gil, you've done that with NIPA. Really, your legacy, this organization's priority over time. Thank you for your friendship. Thank you for your leadership. I've learned a great deal from you as well. And I miss you and wish you all the best and Godspeed.
Michael.
It's all been said, best of luck.
The mask, so I want to make sure you're able to articulate.
Thank you for the service and best of luck with everything you do. Thank you very much.
Tracy, final thoughts?
Yeah, no, just to close out. Gil, I've gotten to know you professionally and personally over the last six years. And as I said last night, one of the true tributes to you, your leadership, is your willingness to let the leaders that are around you, you know, to take off the reins and be free and to operate and look for opportunities in areas that was not historically where we had focused. And there's a reason why your new employer was interested in you and your ability to, your ability to do that. And so, and I wish you well. I know you will take that forward. You've well positioned us with great leaders around the table who will continue to elevate and advance both the goals of the state but also look for new opportunities. Because you've built, you've put within the DNA that ability to stretch and to think innovatively and entrepreneurially. And so I want to thank you for that. And I wish you and your family the best as you move forward. It'll be a pretty exciting time. We will miss you, but certainly hope, wish you all the success.
Thank you very much.
Very pleased to present, come forward. Can take that mask off. I mean, we don't want to remember you as the mask man. We can take a series of pictures here with Paul and all the trustees, but thank you for everything. All trustees, come on up.
Both up the shot, Tony and.
Is it that there?
Can everyone just step to the left?
Step to the left. Trace, have up there, Michael.
Tilt the proclamation down a little. There you go. Take out. One more.
Yeah, finally come on up, so.
Tracy. Take your mask off. It's so cold.
I don't want to look at that show. Rest in front of the door.
No reflection?
No reflection.
Is that better?
Yeah, it's much better. Thank you very much.
One more. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you for everything.
Thank you.
All right, with that, our next meeting is December 6th, 8th. December 8th, same time, same station back here in White Plains. Until then, we wish everyone a happy Halloween, happy Thanksgiving. And I'd welcome and entertain a motion to adjourn our meeting today.
So move it.
Seconds, all in there, all in favor? Aye, any opposed? Motion carried. Thank you, everyone, very, very much. Have a great day. Gil, thank you for everything. Nothing but the best.
Thank you.